9:01 and I now declare the meeting open. Mount Isa City Council would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet, the Kalkadoons, and pay respects to elders past, present and emerging. But I'd also like to extend that respect to any of Australia's First Nations people that are in attendance today. I'd just like to start off by acknowledging that on the 1st of September, Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, passed. And I would just like to ask if we could have a minute's silence. Thank you. As you know, Australia is holding a public holiday tomorrow and I know councillor McCrae will be updating us on what Mount Isa City Council intends to do for, to commemorate Queen Elizabeth II's life. And I think it's only fitting that now we actually go to a prayer and I'd just like to invite and thank Steve Farrelly from the Water of Life Church.
Thank you, Mayor. A verse from James, chapter five. What causes fights and quarrels among you? Do not they come because of the desires that battle within you? You want something but you do not get it. You kill and covet but you cannot have what you want. You quarrel and fight. Do you not know? You do not have because you do not ask God. When you ask, you do not receive because you ask with wrong motives, that you may spend what you get on your pleasures. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks that in your grace and goodness you invite us to bring our cares and concerns to you. Lord, we come not claiming to be wise but seeking your wisdom, that this city may be governed with your blessing, with your providence poured out, that this city may prosper. Lord, for the proceedings today, may your spirit rule, may your wisdom lead, may everyone here see your goodness. We give you thanks, Father, for the life of our Queen now past. We give you thanks for her faith, for her courage in every circumstance. We ask, Father, that that same spirit may be at work in us as we govern. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Stephen, I really appreciate that prayer. Okay, that takes us to item three, which is apologies and leave at absence. And councillor Mick Tully is an apology today. Would someone like to move the motion that they accept councillor Mick Tully's leave of absence?
Yep, I'd like to move a motion that we accept Mick Tully's, councillor Mick Tully's apologies for today's meeting.
Thank you councillor Coghlan, can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, all those in favour, and that's carried. Okay, that takes us now to public participation and I believe we only have one presentation here today, so I'll just suspend proceedings while we do the presentation. And I'll get the deputy mayor to read out what we're doing this morning.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. The YPA, Young People Ahead, they are the recipients today of the donation from the Mount Isa City Council for charity of the month, which is collected by the staff. And the amount is $261.45. Young People Ahead Youth and Community Services is the largest youth organisation located in Mount Isa. YPA supports young people between the ages of 12 to 25 years. The mission of Young People Ahead is to promote, support and advocate for young people, their families and the community, while also developing and sourcing funds to address housing, community safety, education, training and employment, whilst strengthening social inclusion of those marginalised, disadvantaged and disengaged from mainstream society and fostering a return to an environment they feel safe in, cared for and one that is full of opportunities. Young People Ahead offer a number of different services within our Mount Isa community which includes the Youth Empowerment Services, Mount Isa Youth Shelter and the Victims Counselling and Support Service.
Can I please, oh, that's very loud, can I please invite representatives from YPA to come, no, just one, to come forward? Congratulations. Could I get you to say a few words, photo first or a few words first? Photo first. A few words about what YPA do and what it means to you to get donations.
My name is Christine Rankin, I'm a Kalkadoon woman and Wanyu. I'm on the board of directors, I've just recently, this year, joined, I think it's this year. And for this organisation, they have changed the name to an Aboriginal name, I can't finance it. And the fundings and that are good to help the children, you know, the youths, to, you know, to change the way of living in their life if they can improve their life and to help them out, to support them. The fundings would be really good to help them out. They've got a place where Melissa works for the kids, the name of it, Melissa? Shelter thing. Helps some young ones stay there and they try to support them and put them on the right path. So, I'm a bit nervous, I don't know what to say.
You do really well.
Yeah, so, you know, the funding would be really good to help the children, you know, how what's happening here in Mount Isa, to change their way of their life, you know, and help them out because they need a lot of help, you know, things happening at where they live and the change to make them a better person. So, that's why I like to be with YPA, to help them all, you know, and to support them. So, that's all I can say, thank you.
Thank you, Christine. And YPA do a fantastic job and I know that they help young people get driver's licences, help CVs and even apply for jobs, so all that important stuff where sometimes young people need support, so thank you. Thank you, and, sure, I feel like I haven't got a microphone on after that microphone. Okay, so that takes us to...
Public, I think I have something for public participation.
Yeah, we have another part, I... Yep, sorry about that. So councillor McCrae, you have something for the public participation?
I do, I'd like to move that council accepts this petition. It was brought in to me to present by the first, by Mr Kevin Canar, so I'd just like to present it to council, for council to do a, have a look at it and do a report on.
Thank you councillor McCrae, can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Coghlan.
Thank you councillor Coghlan, all those in favour? Are you a no or a yes? Thank you, and that's carried. Okay, and so that does take us now to item five, which is the confirmation of previous meeting minutes. So, can I get someone to move a motion for item 5.1, which is the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 21st of August 2022?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 31st of August 2022 be received and the recommendations there and be adopted.
Thank you, can I get a second for that motion?
McCrae.
Thank you councillor McCrae. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
No, thanks, Madam Mayor, I think it's...
Straightforward.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Right, if there's no comments, all those in favour, and that's carried. That takes us to item 5.2, which is Riversley World Heritage Advisory Committee meeting minutes. Can I get someone to move the officer's recommendations, please?
I can do that, I'd like to move that the minutes of the Riversley World Heritage Advisory Committee meeting held on the 22nd of August 2022 be received and the recommendations be noted.
Thank you councillor McCrae, can I get a second for that motion?
Streton.
Thank you councillor Streton, councillor McCrae, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yes, I've just asked that the minutes be included, I'm a representative of Mount Isa City Council on the Riversley Advisory Committee. The meeting was held last month and I was out for three days doing work with them, so I just asked that the minutes be included so everyone is updated on what's happening out at Riversley.
Thank you. If there's no comments, all those in favour, and that's carried. And that now takes us to item six, which is actions from previous council meetings. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, I'll move, the council receives and notes the outstanding actions from previous council meetings as of the 16th of September 2022.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Fortune, Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, there's three items on the council actions report, they're all still within target and due to finish through October, so yeah, nothing else to report there, thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item seven, which is... Oh, sorry about that, all those in favour, and that's carried. Jump the gun there. So item seven, which is declarations of conflicts of interest, I now invite all councillors to put forward any declarations that they see in the agenda.
Now.
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 Now, thank you. Then that takes us to item eight for a merril minute, which I have none. And then we move on to item nine, which is the reading and consideration of correspondence. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council receives and accepts the August 2022 correspondence report.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, can I get a second for that motion?
McCrae.
Thank you councillor McCrae. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor, so the range of correspondences there, received and outgoing, just a couple of highlights, I think, the local laws database is an interesting one where they've advised council that there's a statewide database now for any changes to local laws and local laws can be accessed by anyone, I would imagine. I'm just not clear on whether the staff meant to upload material into that from here or whether they provide the information to a central source, is that clear at the moment?
Through the chair, all the published local laws are available on the database, so staff do have access to it. If there is any changes to local laws, then we can work through the process of updating that. So staff have been made aware that this database has been created and they're working through with the department just to see how to work through that database and make the changes and update the department of changes.
So they'll sort of have a control packet, yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you. And Mount Isa City Council put in to change some of the local laws for, was that just for us or does that actually affect everybody else when we put in a change like that?
Through the chair, the local laws that's being amended at the moment, that's in the process of amendment, is specific to Mount Isa City Council, so it's a local law for Mount Isa City Council. So at this stage, we're still waiting for that feedback from the department, but it should be close to being finalised.
Thank you.
Just another item, Madam Mayor, thanks for that, Director. The FAGS allocation has been noted there and the correspondence received and I note there's 8.127 or 9 million, 9 million, 1 point, sorry, 8.129 million allocation for the year 2022-23, and that represents a 12% increase. And I think that's a really good pick up for Mount Isa City Council and for the community to have that much of an increase and, you know, it's certainly going to help things going ahead. I'm advised by the director that the increase, there was a small increase put into the budget but the rest of the increase, up to the 12%, will be picked up in the review, due to happen this month, from to the 12%. So, yeah, I just wanted to highlight that, thanks for...
Thank you Deputy Mayor. If there's no more comments, all those in favour, and that's carried. And that now takes us to our item 10, which is executive service reports, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
So that's 10, it looks like it just goes straight into 10.1?
Yep, yep, sorry, 10.1.
I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the July-August 2022 media and communications overview report.
Thank you, can I get a second for that motion?
Streton.
Thank you councillor Streton, councillor McCrae, would you like to speak on behalf of this report?
Yeah, once again, there's been quite a lot of media go through, I think the main focus, just for the couple of weeks just gone, has been the changeover to J.J. Richards, getting people prepared for that, putting their bins out earlier, et cetera. So there's been quite a bit of media about that. Yeah, I think that's about it, but I also just want to make everyone aware of on the public holiday tomorrow, Outback at Isa will be holding a morning tea from 8.30 till 2.30. There you're able to sign the book, it's going to be moved from the library to Outback at Isa, so if you want to put a signature for the book for the Queen, the commemorative book, there's also going to be scones and finger sandwiches served. That's at Outback at Isa tomorrow.
Thank you councillor McCrae.
Through the chair, Madam Mayor, I'd just note quickly that there's been 72 posts for the month of August on social media, which I think is really, really good going and I commend the staff for that level of activity, because it does take a bit to put those posts together and to get them, you know, to get them in good shape and get them out so we can message the community. And I think it's more important now, particularly that the new weekly is currently suspended from operations because of, I believe, lack of staff being able to provide the services. So I haven't heard any further detail on that, whether that weekly newspaper will be available again, but perhaps it will be in the near future.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Any other comments? All those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us to item 10.2, which is the submission to the Community Support and Services Committee regarding the decriminalisation of certain public offences and health and welfare responses. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I can do that, I'd like to move that council endorses submission made to the Community Support and Services Committee regarding the decriminalisation of certain public offences and health and welfare responses.
Thank you councillor McCrae, can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, councillor McCrae, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, I feel like council's put together a strong submission to do with this, I think it's important that we don't decriminalise these offences because it's just decreasing the powers that police have to act with people acting in an antisocial way. We see a lot of instances in this around Mount Isa and our CBD at the moment, so the last thing we want is police not being able to do anything about it and take their powers away even further.
Thank you councillor McCrae. And I was just about to say that the Tuesday directly after the public holiday, so is that the 4th of October, the committee is coming to Mount Isa and Mount Isa City Council will be presenting. And Mount Isa City Council have also offered to give the committee a bit of a tour of Mount Isa and show them some of our challenges.
Through the chair, yeah, I concur with councillor McCrae and that's a great outcome if those people can, representing the committee can come around and have a look at some of the issues. I'd just commend the staff for the quality of the CEO, I think, and executive for the quality of the submission, I think it does point out our challenges quite well. And, you know, it needs to be recognised that Mount Isa is a very, in a very unique situation, being, you know, sort of under assault from cross-border challenges that the Territory aren't dealing with terribly well and that's causing issues for our city here, which is close to the Northern Territory border. So hopefully those things are picked up during this review by the committee and they can make some, they sort of won't decrease the amount of power that police have to at least attempt to try and control the problem.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, is there any other comments? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. So that now takes us to item 11, which is corporate and community service reports, 11.1, which is the finance overview report for July 2022. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
Yeah, I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council receives and accepts the July 2022 finance overview report as presented.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you councillor Fortune, Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is more about a compliance issue, we had the wrong attachment of place in the previous month's reporting, whilst the financial overview report itself was fine and accepted, the attachment at the rear was actually incorrect, so it wasn't picked up at the time unfortunately and we moved this motion today to rectify that.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. Item 11.2, which is the finance overview report for August 2022, can I get someone to move the officer's recommendation, please?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, that council receives and accepts the August 2022 finance overview report as presented.
Thank you, can I get a second for that motion?
Fortune.
Thank you councillor Fortune, Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, sure, Madam Mayor, thank you. The reports are tabled there for this period of the year, showing the revenue and the expenses and quite in a healthy position at the present time, we've got, the income is showing at total income of $8,455, sorry, $8,455, and expenses are at 10.6, which is the actual, compared to budget, that's 1.8 over, however, there are, you know, things that will take care of that and it will flatten out as time goes on. I'll just note that in the expenses, that there is quite a significant difference there between the actual being much higher than budget of around a million dollars, so I'd may ask the director to just to speak to that a little bit, but the other items are aren't too bad.
Thank you Deputy Mayor.
I've got, oh, my...
Through the chair, thank you for that observation Deputy. With regards to the expenses, yes, there is an increase or it's the employee expenses are above the year-to-date budget, it's mainly a timing matter, in some months there's more pay periods or more pay cycles than others, so eventually it will even out with time. Materials and services are under the year-to-date budget amount, it's again, it's around the timing of delivery of works, around the delivery of invoicing as well from various suppliers, so that's mainly what it is. We're still reviewing depreciation and amortisation and ultimately to come through a quarter review based on the actual results, audited results for FY22. So at this moment, we're still working with the draft amounts for FY22. Once that's audited, we'll have a better forecast for depreciation. So at this stage, with us just having operated for two months, I'm not worried about that variance there, I think with time it will clean up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the, yeah, as the director's mentioned, the year-to-date audit is continuing and I believe those reports will be ready towards the end of this month, for the financial year ending 22. Just a couple of other things I'd like to point out, in the report, the water consumption notices for the period were issued on the 1st of September but they were extended for payment, sorry, they were due to be paid by the 1st of September and that was extended until the 21st of September because there were some printing issues, so, which is today, they closed, so there should be money coming in for that. And the other item, the borrowings, is well in check, now I believe there's a lot of increases in interest by the RBA at the moment, but I don't believe that flows on to our borrowings due to the nature of the contracts that we have, however.
Through you, Madam Mayor, the council received a briefing, probably within the next month, there's already been some work done in relation to whether it would be opportune to be paying off some of those loans, so we're reaching that point at this time, so a report will come back to council.
Yeah, well that's interesting, yeah, because we have looked at that on a couple of occasions and it has been quite expensive to do that.
We're approaching the point where it actually makes sense to do that.
Yeah, thank you. So apart from that, Madam Mayor, that's all I'd like to highlight, the report, thanks very much.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, that was very comprehensive, would anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, through the chair, just to the CEO or director of finance, I know the notices for the water have gone out, when should people be expecting their rates notices to go out?
Through the chair, we, the issue with the water notices is not so much the printing, they're printed in Melbourne and then they're couriered back up here, so it's the time that in, I suppose, takes to get them back up here and dispatched. We have put extra weeks on the notice, so we will be giving them, I think, effectively about four weeks by the time that the average person in Isa actually gets it in their post office box. Sorry, the general rates will be issued, because of a statutory timeframe, they're always dated, the 30th of September, three months in arrears, three months in advance, and they will be going out towards the end of October, again with an extended timeframe for repayment.
Thank you, you haven't got a date for that extended time?
I don't have a date on me, but I can report back to you with the specific dates.
Thank you.
Could I just ask if, with the rates notices going out, if people do get them online rather than through the post, is it quicker to get the, is it just a few days or is it a week?
Through you, Madam Mayor, it would be great to get people doing their rates online across the board, it would save a huge amount of time and effort, those people need to volunteer their information over to get those rates, I don't know if the manager wishes to speak to this as well?
Each time we issue the notices, we ask them to indicate whether they want them getting online, they... They of and we're getting an increasing take-up. Uh we can't as yet make it compulsory uh because the legislation's not there, but we're getting more and more. So I I'll give you specific numbers for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's an ongoing process, that one.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. Now this takes us to item 14, uh 11.4, local laws. Have I missed one?
11.3, yeah.
I've missed the pool. Okay. Um 11.3, splashes overview report for August 2022. Um can I get someone to move the officer's recommendation, please?
I'll move that the council receives and accepts the August 2022 splashes overview overview report as presented.
Thank you, Council Coglan. Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, Council McCrae. Council Coglan, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, there's not much in the um report at the moment, only because we're just coming out of the winter months. I'd like to say it's heating up, but we've had lovely rain overnight, so um I know the schools are all back using the pool and that. I just would like to know, are we still on track for the um the construction of the lifeguard and the first aid room? That was supposed to be end of September, but I know everyone's having trouble with work workers.
Through you, Madam Mayor, uh a a contractor or tradesperson has been appointed. They're trying to do the work uh in between their other jobs at the moment. Um I believe we're still on track to have it delivered probably in the next two months and have it finalised from there.
Okay, thank you.
I- i- if I may, councillor, just take the opportunity because um it's good to have things to do on the school holidays. Um the inflatables will hopefully be brought out again um over the school holidays and over the the weekend periods there, but that that's up to the swimming people, but it's always a good idea to have that inflatable going.
No worries, well, I'll get my bikinis ready.
Um do do we advertise when we do the um, do we actually put it on Facebook, hey, we're doing inflatables at two o'clock today or we've got the whirlie? Is it the whirlie pool?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, through you, Madam Mayor, the whirlie pool or the uh Rapid River um is um it 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 is scheduled to go over the weekend, so different timeframes depending on how many young people are there. In relation to the um inflatables they're advertised on social media, that's all done by Shay.
Okay, so um if you are intending to get a town uh splashes, I keep on the side of town pool. Um it's it's a good idea just to check with the staff if they are going to have the Rapid River go because it is a lot of fun and I know a lot of kids love it.
And and can we just also share that through, if Shay puts it up, share it through our our Facebook as well, because I noticed we've done that for the library this week, this month, and it's worked really well.
Yep. And I know my kids are swimming, no matter what the temperature is, so uh it doesn't stop Mount Isa kids from getting in that pool. All right, well, if we've got no other comments, um all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, now this one takes us to 11.4, which is the local laws overview report for July 22 and August 22. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
Yeah, I'll move, Madam Mayor, thank you. Uh recommendation there is council receives and accepts the July 2022 and August 2022 local laws overview report.
Thank you, Council Streton. Can I get someone to second that motion?
McCrae.
Thank you, Council McCrae. Council Streton, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, a couple of things happened over the last couple of months. Um the council pet day was held on uh 9th of July. I'd just like to acknowledge all the sponsors that helped out on on those days. And um also there, the council, along with Mount Isa's council, ran the successful uh caravan overflow parking campaign during the peak seasons in July and August, George McCoy Park and Tom O'Hara Park. So um any uh, once the caravan parks were full, um we could keep the tourists in town and um that that was really good. And just like to ignore the knowledge that the upgrade to the main kennels at the energy management facility was completed on the 30th, 30th of August.
Oh, that's fantastic.
Helps keep the little ferry friends comfortable.
Thank you. And um, Shalay, would you like to explain what we did with that um refurbishment, well, actually building, because I think it's quite significant?
Yes, uh through you, Madam Mayor. Um the works that were done involve uh first of all, an upgrade to the facility that includes some air conditioning. We do acknowledge that Mount Isa gets particularly hot in summer and uh the animals can be under duress because of the heat. So we put something in or we did some upgrades to the structure to ensure that they were comfortable throughout the the hotter months. There was also upgrade works to the floor just to ensure that um uh the pavil or any other diseases could not be transferred with the to through the animals or throughout the shelter. Another area that was looked at as part of the upgrade was the sewer works because at the moment we have had issues around, you know, cleaning up the the pound, the animal management area, the pound area, and just ensuring there's that compliance and hygiene, so that's some of the works that have has been held. The other big one that uh is worth noting is um the the area where uh the members of the public can come in and um surrender an animal, that's been upgraded because um there was uh feedback from the community that there was no shade structure. Uh it there was no access for um the animals to have water, so all of those um upgrades have been done as part of that project. Thank you.
That's fantastic. And and was the, was there a fan or or some kind of um a fan put at the front as well or, yep?
Yes, absolutely. So that in, that was part of the capital works. It's just about making sure that when we do uh accept these, the animals, that we can look after them in a humane uh way. The other thing is uh in terms of attendance over the weekend can be problematic, so we just need to make sure that the animals are comfortable throughout the weekend and have the best chance of survival and adoption potentially in future.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one? No? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that then takes us to um 11.5, which is the waste management overview report for July and August 2022. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'll do that one. Uh the council receives and accepts the July 2022 and August 2022 waste management overview report as presented.
Thank you, Council Streton. Can I get a second for that motion, please?
Fortune.
Thank you, Council Fortune. Uh Council Streton, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yeah, I'd just like to uh state that in August 2022, the um outcome of the May inspection by the Department of Environment and Science was received and with positive results around environmental compliance. That's stormwater leaching and landfill management practice are can, will be continued focuses and ongoing in improvements in future.
Thank you.
So, yeah, that's good to hear.
Yep, thank you. Did any any other comments?
Uh it might be just pertinent to talk um about the change in the upcoming um garbage collection. I think that's um I just forget the date at the moment, but there's it's due in September, isn't it? Or is it 1st of October? Yeah, 1st of October is the uh is the uh transfer date from council uh workers to the um contractors to to do the domestic uh curbside collection, so it's just um worthy of note of that date.
Thank you. There's no more comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that moves us to item 11.6, which is the environmental and biosecurity overview report for July and August for 2022. Can I get um?
Yeah, Madam, I'll go again. Uh council receives and accepts the July 2022 and August 2022 environmental and biosecurity overview report.
Thank you, Council Streton. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, Council Fortune. Council Streton, would you like to comment on this motion?
Yeah, there's a bit of a operational overview there. I'm seeing the team's been working real hard. Environmental Services and Biosecurity processed a total of 325 service requests, searches, inquiries and complaints during the July 2022 and 2020, August 2022. Environmental Service has begun processing renewal applications for all licences, businesses. The licences will be issued once payment has been made, as all invoices were issued on 31st of August 2022. Inspections were conducted by environmental health officers at multiple events over the festive season, including Mount Isa Street Festival, St Joseph's Bromley School Fate and the Mount Isa Mines Radio.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one?
Yeah, just through the chair, Madam Mayor, I'd just like to um pass on my thanks to the environmental team that work in in the office and out and about. You know, making sure that everything is run properly. Um I know August and September are very busy months for them. And I know being involved in a few of these events, um how hard they did work in making sure that everyone got their licences on time and then when they come around um and checking, they're not, they're not coming, they're just trying to make sure that everyone's safe. The people selling the food and the people buying the food are safe, so I'd just like to say, if you could pass on my thanks, because I think they've done an amazing job over the last couple of months.
Thank you, Council Coglan.
Through you, Madam Mayor, no problem at all. Um Council Streton, can I just change the recommendation and take the AL off environment? So it is environment instead of environmental?
Yep.
It's just a procedural thing. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. 11.7, the annual report for 2122 and environmental uh charge projects. Can I get someone to move the officer's recommendation, please?
Yes, I read that, Madam Mayor. The council approves the annual report, 2122 environmental charge projects.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Council Streton, would you like to speak on behalf of this report?
Yeah, background there is the environmental charge process actions that were undertaken in the 2122 financial year. A detail in the tax report, 2122 environmental charge projects. Um I'd just like to read out a few out of the annual report. Um was it Free Farm Plants Day, environmental grant programme, water conservation campaign, energy efficiency strategy, one and two, and the biodiversity strategy, and the tree planting.
Thank you.
And uh anybody there wants to read the whole report, it's tabled there.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us now to item 11.8, which is approval for environmental charge and projects for 2022, 23. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, council approves the environmental charge projects for the 22, 2023 financial year and the total budget of $300,000 to undertake all projects. One, Free Plants Day of $35,000. Two, sustainable workplace practices, $7,500. Three, water conservation campaign, $10,000. Uh number four, community environmental grants, $50,000. Five, energy efficient strategy, stage three, $122,500. Number six, biodiversity strategy project implementation, $40,000. And seven, waste education campaign of $35,000, total budget of $300,000.
Thank you, uh Council Streton. Can I get someone to uh second that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, Council Fortune. Council Streton, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, I'd just like to um say that's the projects coming up that um we've undertaken out of the environmental charge that um comes on your rates. Um the 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 Free Plants Day seems to be one of the most popular for Mount Isa and um water conservation campaign is very good as well, but it's just an ongoing um projects that we'll fulfil in the future.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, just a comment through the chair that uh that also includes the uh community environment grants too as well and would like to, council would like to encourage the community to come forward with uh projects for uh the good of our environment around Mount Isa. Um there's a number of ways you can do that through council. I'm sure that the uh um applications will be out online and um through our social media too.
Thank you. That's a great reminder, Council Fortune. And um I think I'd just like to add that uh last week we had St Joey's Year Four come into council chambers and they were studying local government and in particular persuasive arguments. We had eight candidates running for the position of Mayor of Mount Isa for the day. And what was interesting is nearly all the candidates brought up, um how the environment, uh the um renewable energy and also recycling. That was very much the theme of all the candidates. Uh they did bring up a few um things with litter and also more play equipment in parks and at the dam. And uh and even as far as uh airfares, which we all can understand, but I thought that was really interesting that um you know, this environmental charge and the projects we're doing, you know, there are 50 year nine kids that were, it was very important to them. All right.
Yeah, through the chair, just like to, I concur with what the comments are around the chamber today. Um I'd just like to uh, you know, uh I think this is a great initiative of council that's been undertaken. We're working off an environmental management plan, five-year plan and and just to sort of let the community know that we are, whilst we are receiving these funds from the community, we're uh we're using them on these projects um each year and we're quietly working away on the environment um around the community and and that with a number of initiatives and it's it's quite a broad spread of initiatives and uh yeah, I just think it's um valuable to sort of highlight that. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no more comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. Which takes us now to item 11.9, which is the Frank Aston Hill Master Plan. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Um I'd like to move that councillor points CA architects to undertake a detailed master plan of Frank Aston Hill at an additional cost of $12,000 excluding GST plus travel costs.
Thank you, Council McCrae. Can I get a second for that motion?
Streton.
Thank you, Council Streton. Council McCrae, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Um yes, um the miners' memorial committee, I'm not part of that, but I understand they've been working very hard on trying to identify a site to have the miners' memorial, but before that can go ahead um at Frank Aston, we need to do a thorough assessment of the hill and and a master plan. So this is um part of deciding where that miners' memorial will eventually go, but also giving us some a master plan for that area, so we've got a a good idea on how we want to continue and develop the site.
Thank you. And I think that's really important to mention that uh it i- i- if it doesn't go ahead at Frank Aston Hill, that we as a council acknowledge that something does have to happen with the hill and and a plan, uh a master plan is 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 the way to go. Any other comments? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. It takes us now um to 11.10, which is uh Mount Isa Day for the 24th of February 23. An application for appointment of the Mount Isa Day Bank Holiday. Would someone like to move that motion?
Yes, I'd like to move that council endorses the 24th of February 2023 Friday as the nominated date for the 2023 Mount Isa Day Bank Holiday to occur.
Thank you, Council McCrae. Can I get a second for that motion?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Council McCrae, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Um I would, yes. The 100 Year Committee all voted in favour of um making the day after Mount Isa Day, the Friday, the 24th, a public holiday to allow people to enjoy the long weekend, to celebrate 100 years of Mount Isa. Um I'll just make note that a bank holiday is a special holiday. For any other reason, it's not a public holiday. Um a a bank holiday only under the trading allowable hours 1990 is only a holiday for banks and insurance offices and under a directive of the Public Services Act 2008. A holiday for public service employees unless otherwise determined by the chief executive. This will incur no penalty rates for businesses. So um it's good to know that businesses won't be hit with penalty rates if they want to open, because obviously with lots of visitors in town, we'd like our local businesses to be open.
Thank you, Council McCrae. Is there any other comments on this one?
No, fine, Madam Mayor, thanks. I think Council McCrae's captured it well.
Very well. And and I just wanted to reiterate that we we turn 100 on Thursday, which is the 23rd of February 2023. And that's why we're looking at the Friday being the public holiday and uh a recovery day as such, or maybe a recovery weekend. Okay, uh with no more comments, all those in favour?
I'm against.
Would you like your vote recorded, Council Coglan? Yeah, can we record Council Coglan voting against the public holiday?
Bank holiday.
Bank holiday, sorry, the public bank holiday. Item 11.11, which is the Regional University Centre Symposium and National Conference, would someone like to move an officer's recommendation? Would someone like to move an officer's recommendation?
I'll move that council approves and nominates councillor Peter McCrae to attend the two thousand and twenty two Regional University Centre Symposium and the National Conference for Regional Rural and Remote Education on the twelfth to the fourteenth of October, twenty twenty two.
Thank you, councillor Coglan. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, fortune.
Count, thank you, councillor fortune. Councillor, uh, Coglan, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, just like, I'd put councillor McCrae's name forward for this as, um, she's got twenty years' experience in education. She's done her university degree in education and she still has a lot of contacts within the education department. So I think she'd be an excellent choice of going and representing Mount Isa.
Thank you, councillor Coglan. Any other comments on this one? No?
Through you, yeah, through you, madam mayor.
Yes, I accept that.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Coglan.
Thank you. And, and yes, there will be an opportunity also in November for, um, a visit to, um, I think it's the South East Corner near Twumba, and there's three regional universities there.
Yeah, Maranaua.
Yep. So south, so, sorry. So there's an opportunity also in November, um, to visit three country universities, um, south west of Brisbane. Yep. And, uh, and, and that'll be another opportunity to send either councillors or council staff. This particular one is going to be funded, so who, um, so councillor McCrae will be, um, we will be able to get reimbursed for the travel for this one. And, uh, you know, as you all know, I have been lobbying to have a, a university presence in Mount Isa. And I think a mining university presence is, is definitely something that should be happening in Mount Isa. And why the country university, um, isn't that? It is a great opportunity for the local people to be able to stay in Mount Isa and to be able to study. And I think that will be, um, really relieve some of the financial burdens on families who, who want their children to go on and do university. And, and but, um, a- as we all know, it's twenty two thousand dollars a year just to accommodate and, um, just accommodate someone in the university, and that's not your HECS fees. And, uh, then on top of that, the families will have to, um, fly them home for holidays. And it's just a huge burden on families. So being able to have a country university, uh, in Mount Isa is a fantastic first step forward. But, um, I'll just keep, uh, I'll remind you that I'm still going to be lobbying to have a mining university presence in Mount Isa, because we are the North West Mineral Province and it just makes sense to have something here. So that's, that's what's something I'll keep talking about. And, and I, I just want to make sure you understand that I've thrown my complete support behind the country university. It's something we definitely want as a city, but, um, I, I think we still need to be reaching for, uh, the presence here as well.
All right. All those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to item twelve for infrastructure services reports. Um, twelve point one, works and operations overview report. And the officer's recommendation is that council, oh, sorry, who would like to move the officer's recommendation?
Uh, I'll move, madam mayor, that council receives and accepts the August, uh, twenty twenty two works and operations overview report.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Fortune, second.
Thank you. Would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, thanks, uh, through the chair. Um, so, uh, council's, um, completed the Rose to Recovery Rehabilitation Ceiling Works on, um, on sections in the CBD. So I think everyone will have noticed the, um, the improvement there and it's, um, it's quite welcome, uh, and quite a good job. Um, they've, uh, council crews, um, uh, carried out the event works for the Mount Isa Street Festival and also assisted with the preparation of the Mount Isa Radio. And, um, uh, you know, the, you know, the for, the, the sort of overview of the, um, of the, um, uh, festival week was quite good. So, um, good to see council a big part of that. Um, and the, we completed the disaster recovery funding arrangement works on the Gunpowder Mount Oxide and Old May Downs Road. Um, and that's, um, we're, we're also working presently on the Lake Julius, Camwell, Yarandangie, the Moore Stone, which I don't know where that is, and the Riversley Roads as well. So, uh, quite a bit of, uh, country work there going on at the same time. Uh, so there's a couple of tables there, madam mayor, that just highlight, um, uh, you know, some of the difficulties we have with, um, with vandalism, graffiti, et cetera, that council has to deal with on an ongoing basis. Um, and that there is a, there is a cost to that. And also, um, you know, it's, it's onerous on council to have to, to deal with this all the time. I note, um, in May, June, they've got the, the number of vandalism occurrences in the CBD alone, one hundred and fifty two, um, which, you know, really, really does put a drain on our, on our staff. Um, so that's, that's all from me, madam mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, where, where, street cleaner? Is that still going around and what times do that, does that go around?
Through you, madam mayor. I sent an email off at seven AM this morning asking where the scrubber is up to at this point in time. Some of the staff have left the organisation. I believe we're waiting on a, uh, person to come in and train new staff on the scrubber.
Okay. Because I think when, when that was going around, it was very noticeable and so the thinner the better. Thank you. Any other comments? All right, all those in favour? That's carried. Next one is twelve point two, the request for sole supplier for S P S switchboard upgrades.
Um, I'll move, madam mayor, that, um, council accepts the quotation received from Mickelson Electrical Contractors to supply, install and upgrade the existing switchboards at S P S six and S P S nine for the quoted price of one hundred and twenty two thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars, including GST, um, or a hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred dollars excluding GST on the basis that there is only one supplier who is reasonably available and that because of the specialised nature of the services that are sought, it would be impractical to invite further quotes.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, fortune.
Thank you, councillor fortune. Uh, deputy mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, thank you, madam mayor. Um, so this is part of an ongoing programme. We're doing, uh, another couple of switchboards. Um, I believe there was twenty, uh, existing sewage pump stations that have been upgraded as we, as we move along the continuum of upgrading our assets, um, you know, whenever funds are available and, uh, whenever we can apply resources to it. Um, so this is, uh, something that's been planned in the pipeline and, um, it's a good opportunity to do it now. Unfortunately, as everybody's aware, the, the range of contractors and, um, suppliers available is, is seems to be diminishing by the day. Um, and, uh, it's, it's evidenced by the fact that we need to get this done, but we also have only access to one supplier, um, who, who has done a lot of work for council before. Thanks, madam mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us to item thirteen, which is general business, which are... Okay, so if you head over to the supplementary agenda... Jumping the gun there? Okay, so has everybody got twelve point three up on their screen?
Yep.
Yep. So, uh, twelve point three is major projects overview report. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move that council receives and accepts the August two thousand and twenty two major projects over- overview report as presented.
Thank you, councillor Coglan. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, fortune.
Thank you, councillor fortune. Good. Would you like to speak on behalf of this, councillor Coglan?
Oh, no, oh, just a, a few little points. Um, that the Gallipoli Park Pump Track CCTV rectification and communication upgrade to be able to send signals to the QPS has commenced with a suitably qualified contractor. The family fun park, the skate park, the shade structure has been erected. And I think we're having a two-week break over the Christmas holidays for that to be used. It's opened.
So through you, madam mayor, the skate park is opened and, but it's not finished. They're waiting on some parts, but they've quarantined the areas that may represent any sort of risk. Um, it's been well used.
Yep. No, that's good. So we've got splashes, the pump track and the skate park all open for the kids over the school holiday, plus all the other parks. And, um, we've also, phase one of the Telstra Hill Access Road and Car Park are complete. Phase two, the footpath from Able Smith Drive to Telstra Hill Access Road is complete as well. Uh, the construction of the basketball court at Lions Park has started. Um, I've seen people down there working on it, um, again. And the Centennial Park construction tender has been advertised to market and closes mid-September. Um, and then the Riversley Road construction has been awarded and the contractor to begin work mid-September.
Thank you, councillor Coglan. Would someone, uh, any other comments on this one?
Yes, through the chair, madam mayor, look, uh, many of those projects are pretty highly visible to the community. And I've been, uh, had fielded a few questions around the, what's going on with Centennial Park and the, and this, and the, uh, fun park. And also, uh, during the, uh, Gallipoli Park, um, Pump Track, uh, Open Day, uh, there's questions around CCTV and, and how that, uh, will work in and, and where it will go. And, um, it's good to see that, uh, the, uh, uh, the qualified contractor's been, um, nailed down and, and QPS will, will be getting the signals and the vision from that park to monitor it. So, uh, uh, quite a while has passed since the question was asked, but I'm happy to report back that, um, there, there's something finally happening. But, uh, once again, they're all highly visible projects in the community and they'd be, uh, great additions to the community. Um, the construction of the basketball at, uh, the Lions Park, uh, will be a, a great addition to that park too as well.
And it's shaded as well, which I think is, it makes that, um, particular facility being able to be used all year round. So that's real, that is a really good outcome.
Uh, through the chair, could I just ask you a question on the, uh, Centennial? We've got park here, but I think we call it Centennial Place actually, in most references. But, um, uh, sort of, we get a bit of an update on how that's going tender-wise? Have we got early interest in it or?
Through you, madam mayor. Um, where we're up to at the moment, if councillors, um, pop down there, you'd see all the concrete has been removed. That concrete will be recycled. Um, there is, um, current tenders out at the moment, uh, for the equipment, for the toilets, um, and basically for the, um, the different landscaping options through there at the moment. A report came to council, I, I believe two months ago, that outlined the procurement process that we were going down. So at the moment, the manager of major projects and his team are going through different individual quotes on each of the pieces of equipment, similar to what we did in relation to the family fun park that the councillors will remember the different types of play equipment that were then selected to go and be put into the family fun park. So at the moment, it seems to be travelling on track.
Okay, yeah, that's good. It's good that there's a bit of interest. It's always a worry at this present time. Um, it's, uh, just, I don't know if you can answer this now, but, um, that's a sort of a, we used to call it the deep end when I was a lot younger, but, um, there's a, there's a depression there where that, um, building sits and, and I imagine there's a fair bit of fill going into it, um, lifted out of that. Is that, uh, the plan?
Through you, madam mayor. Uh, the, there is a recognition of the flooding that occurs in that corner. If I believe, if I remember correctly, it's corner.
Yeah.
Um, and there's been compensation, um, uh, uh, to put in to actually deal with that. So the, the designers, um, were happy with what they've put forward, so that should accommodate that. And I don't think there's anything there that's going to be impacted by any flooding.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's good. Thanks.
That's it. Yeah. And I think the deputy mayor brings up a good point. We've been throwing around a few names for Centennial Place or Centennial, um, Square or Centennial Park. And I think, um, you know, are we going to look at getting the community to give us a few, um, ideas on names? Because we do need to have a name at some point and we've already had a Centennial Park for many, many years, which is now...
No, it was Centenary Park.
Centenary Park.
Yeah, yeah. It was never a Centennial Place. So, uh, look, whenever I'm talking to people, I just call it Centennial Place.
Yeah, but it was just a makeshift name that we threw out there. So do we want to go back to the community and see if they want to come up with some names? Because, you know, otherwise that'll end up sticking.
I think it's a whole idea that it is to commemorate our hundred years, so that's probably an appropriate name.
Centennial Place?
Yep.
Really?
Yep.
Okay. Um, I don't like the name, but that's just me. Anyway, I, I'd love to see the community have an option, so have a think about that anyway. All right, is there any other comments? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. All right, well, um, that leaves us to the, the end of the agenda and we will, will be adjourning now for around ten minutes, reopening around quarter past ten into closed business. I'd like to thank everybody who was in attendance today and, uh, um, and that's it.
And that's it.
Would someone like to move the motion? That council considers the following confidential reports in a meeting close to the public in accordance with section 254j of the Local Government Regulation 2012. 14.1, financial year 2021/22 interim audit report for Manazza City Council and MIKO. 14.2, strategic three-year internal audit plan 2023 to 2025 and annual internal audit plan 2022 to 2023. 14.3, minutes of the Audit and Risk Management Committee meeting held on the 2nd of September 2022 as a supplementary agenda. Would someone like to move that motion?
I move, madam mayor.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Can I get a second after that motion?
McCray.
Thank you, councillor McCray. All those in favour? And that's carried, and we are now in closed session. Would you like to move the motion that council moves out of closed council and into open council?
Move.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Can I get a second after that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you Council of Fortune. All those in favour? And that's carried. It's seven thirty six AM and we're now back in open council. Okay, so that now takes us into item fourteen point one which is in the final agenda if anyone has jumped out and trying to look at where we are up to. So it is one hundred and eighty three and fourteen point one is a financial year twenty twenty one twenty two interim audit report for Manhaisa City Council and MIKO. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation please?
I'll move, Madam Mayor. Thank you. That council receives and accepts the interim external audit report for the Manhaisa City Council, MICC, and the Manhaisa City Council owned enterprise proprietary limited as presented.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Can I get a second after that motion?
Strutton.
Thank you Council of Strutton. All those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us to item fourteen point two which is the strategic three-year internal audit plan for twenty three twenty five and annual internal audit plan for twenty two to twenty three. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation please?
I'll move again. Madam Mayor, the council receives and accepts the strategic three-year internal audit plan two thousand and twenty three to two thousand and twenty five and that annual internal plan two thousand and twenty two to twenty three as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second after that motion?
McCray.
Thank you Council McCray. All those in favour? And that's carried. Now if you go over to your supplementary agenda. Item fourteen point three, which is the minutes of the Audit and Risk Management Committee meeting held on September twenty twenty two. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Still finding it.
It's on page fourteen.
No, still finding that supplementary.
I can do that. I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the unconfirmed Audit and Risk Management Committee meeting minutes dated twenty sixth of May twenty twenty two as presented.
Thank you Council McCray. Can I get a second after that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you Council of Fortune. All those in favour? And that's carried. I'd just like to remind everyone that tomorrow is a national public holiday for Australia to commemorate Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth the second. Atback and Isa will be hosting a cuppa from eight thirty AM to two thirty PM. And it will be an opportunity to go along and sign a commemorative book but also be with like-minded people having a cuppa and a scone. The time is now.